All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the June 13th, 2019 work session of public hearing of Penfield Planning Board. Allison, would you please call the roll?
Hetske?
Here.
Bastian?
Here.
Knauer?
Here.
Tidings?
Here.
Burton?
Here.
Nurseinger?
Here.
Weisar?
Here.
All right. We have a town engineer entering the fray here for an automotive mishap. Alleged automotive mishap. All right, we got minutes from May 23rd. Hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to review them.
I have. I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
All right.
I'll second.
Okay.
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye. I did review those, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Terrific. Okay, Zach, you want to take over and go through our table applications?
I'd love to. So, our first table application is the Wilbur's Project. That has been... We did not take any action last meeting. We are back tonight to talk about the...
Let me pause you for a second here.
If you will be discussing this matter, I will recuse myself.
Yes, you will, and so will he.
These two gentlemen will pause and leave the table. Okay.
Wow, it sounds fun outside. That's my sidebar comment.
I'm not ringing outside.
Oh, fun. Good times.
That's odd for Rochester. It's so weird.
Imagine that.
Rain?
In the late spring, early summer. Never. No, no. Anyways, we're back. Tonight, what we have before you is the secret determination for this project. Everything so far to date has been to the board's... The board has not any questions, concerns. Everything's been addressed, both from your comments and from staff's comments. The last round of PRC comments went out last week, and they were all technical in nature, and they've accommodated us with new plans already for that as well. So, with all that being said, what remains of this project after a secret determination this evening would be a zoning board vote at their next meeting, which is next week, for the request for an expansion to a pre-existing non-conforming use. Following that, this board will be able to make a site plan determination at the following meeting for the June work session.
June 20th.
Yes.
Okay.
So, with that being said, there are two things before you. One is the EAF, the completed full EAF for this project. The second is the negative declaration document for the project as proposed.
All right.
Unless you guys get a problem with it, I'll make the motions. There's no sense.
I'll second.
All right, I'll make the motion. You have to approve the...
For the EAF?
Yep.
I'll second.
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Knauer? Or, excuse me, Tidings?
Aye.
Thank you.
Knauer's recused.
Right.
Okay.
I'll make the motion for the night deck.
Okay.
Please.
I'll second.
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
Okay. Continue table.
Yep, we'll continue table. That does conclude the secret portion of this project.
Move to table.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I'll make the motion.
You're very welcome, Bob. Have a good night.
Second.
You too.
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
And with that, we begin preparing an approval resolution for that project. Pending the outcome of the zoning board.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Moving on. We have Panorama Park Project at 125 Panorama Creek. For this project, secret was concluded at our previous meeting on May 25th. That involved the EAF and the negative declaration as well. That's all been wrapped up, completed, and the night deck has been posted to the ENB, the DEC. Since then, we have prepared an approval resolution for this board. However, before we get into that and the conditions that we've included as part of the process so far, I do have to touch on just one item that was a public comment that was received from the Allen's Creek Valley Homewares Association. And Doug, if you could pull that up quickly from the project file, that would be great, just so it's easier for the board. If the computer wanted to pay attention, maybe the thunderstorm's interrupting it.
I think we just lost access to the networks.
All the benefits of being in the cloud.
No, we're halfway. Anyways, two comments came in. The first was a request to modify construction activities for this part of the project. They voiced that during the public hearing. As we stated, as the applicant stated, the permitted hours of operation for construction all begin at 7:00 a.m. The HOA asked if the board would consider 8:00 a.m. I don't believe the town has ever done something like that, to my knowledge. So, I wanted to put it before you tonight. If you did have any concerns about construction hours, if not, let them go on as the code allows. Construction is temporary. We know this.
Yeah, I'd say go along with what the code says. If there's an issue, then...
Let code enforcement get involved. Okay. The other request was talking about deliveries to the facilities, which we're not at that phase in this part of the project right now, as we're only looking at the roadway and the associated utilities with it and some preliminary grading. As we know, final site plan review will be required for all the development lots with this project, so that's something that the board would look at when you know what specific use is coming in for each development lot. So, I will kind of put a hold on that one until future applications.
Okay.
With that being said, we have a draft approval resolution before you. It does involve conditions that capture both, again, what's being proposed with this project at this phase, which is for preliminary site work, and to get the dedicated road installed with those utilities. And then, towards the second half of the conditions, as we approach condition number 31, we have a section in there for all the future development of this project, for the nine development lots that are proposed, that outline what is required of the applicant at the time of submission for site plan approval for each lot. This includes all the site plan requirements, the engineering requirements, architecture, landscaping, lighting, screening of all utilities if necessary, property maintenance agreements, and kind of our standard items that we would see in every site plan approval. It would require a public hearing for each lot, and we have set the maximum square foot cloud of gross building area at 350,000 square feet, as proposed by the applicant. So, that's all included in the resolution, along with the parking that they've calculated they can provide with the project. Throughout the document, it does reference the required buffer area setback to the zoning districts that surround the site, which include the manufactured home park, multiple residential for the Allen's Creek Valley townhouses, as well as general business. All of those have a specific amount of feet from the boundary of the zoning district to where there should be a buffer area. For the most part, that is 150 feet around the site. They've complied with that throughout the project, and that's been documented in the resolution as well. And the other big thing with this project, as we know, was the EPods. Steep slopes are present, woodlots are present. A portion, a very small portion of the 100-year floodplain will be disturbed, but there will be the necessary compensating cuts and fills to offset that, and that's all on the site plans. They've started preparing easements for all the utilities that are necessary with this project. They've provided the pedestrian access easement, which is subject to change based on the development of this site as it goes along. And they've been working with the state and county DOTs on the improvements for Panorama Trail South, as well as the on-ramp to 441 and the modifications that will come with that. And as you know, we've gone through a couple rounds of traffic study reviews with this project. The traffic impact study was provided. Our consultant looked at it twice, along with the responses from the applicant, and we did reach a point where everything was satisfactory, so that's been documented in here as well. Does the board have any questions, concerns, or would you like to discuss anything in the resolution that we haven't already touched on?
Everybody good?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that was a nice summary, Zach.
Fresh in my mind.
So, with that, I guess my project, so I will move to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Tidings gets it. Sorry.
I'm okay.
Me and Terry.
Hetske?
Bill's on the call tonight.
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knauer?
Sure you want to say aye to that one, Bill?
Tidings?
Aye.
Excellent.
All right.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
I'll be in touch, Peter, with all the next steps, as usual.
Yeah, we'll be back in a couple months.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Try and stay dry. If not, leave it out.
Yeah, stay dry.
Unlike Eric.
Peter.
All right.
No updates for 280 Panorama?
Correct. No action on that application this evening, so we'll just move on to our one action item. Sorry, I'm getting all my thoughts organized over here. Walmart at Big Town Plaza. We have seen a similar request previously, last year, actually. They recently installed, and I put it in your agenda with comments, you have pictures there, and Doug's pulling it up now. They recently installed customer pickup parking spaces for their online ordering system through the apps and the website, so people can park. Exactly. Park. Things come to you, you don't go to them. They have six spots out there now, and they're requesting four more by way of restriping. Okay, zooming in on it there. I had some pictures, actually, in the file, too. But actually, stay right where you are. This helps. On the right side of this page, Doug, where the orange bar is, down one, that's what we're talking about. You can see the six spots that are installed there with the canopy structure around it. They're highlighting the area. They want to restripe six spaces for four more of those spaces. However, they will not be extending the canopy. It will just be signed accordingly and with the appropriate paint color for the striping. Six to four, a net reduction in two parking spaces in a parking field that is known as Walmart.
Cat bowl.
Yep. And last time we did this, we did document all of that through site plan modification, and that would be the same request this evening before the board.
Anybody have an issue?
No.
Okay. Bill, you want to move to approve it?
I'll second.
Include it.
2019, everyone get to vote.
Everyone's included.
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
All right.
With that being said, I have nothing else for this portion of the meeting.
Nothing else.
Nope. We have a public hearing tonight.
All right, we have about 15 minutes until we need to reconvene.
Before we just...
Yeah.
Sure.
Something on rushers?
Heritage Christian.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So, we currently have a photograph of the building on another site, a front elevation of the building that was designed for another site. So, they're marked in the record as being submitted elevations, but they're not necessarily elevations unless they're going to duplicate that building.
Exactly.
Color, texture, and everything.
Right.
Fair point to ask during the public hearing, and we get confirmation then, and then follow up accordingly.
Yeah, so I just thought that maybe we should rebrand those in the record.
Yes.
Because they're not submitted elevations that are representative of this site.
We can rename them in the files, for sure. That's a good catch.
Okay. All right. Without anything else, we will recess and reconvene at 7:00. All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 13th meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. We will begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. Tonight, we have just one item on our agenda, the way our process works. If you're unfamiliar with it, is the applicant will stand at the podium and present their idea to the board. Board members will ask questions and clarifications of the applicant, and then we will open it up for audience participation. If you'd like to comment, there are... You can either... We don't have a huge crowd, so if you want, you can fill out one of these forms over at the table, or just when it comes to that point in time, you can raise your hand. I'll call on you. And then, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and then address all your comments to the board and not the applicant. With that, please silence all mobile devices, and we'll get the hearing started.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Application number one, Marathon Engineering, 39 Cascade Drive, Rochester, New York, 14614, on behalf of Heritage Christian Services, requests under Chapter 250, Articles 11-11.2 and 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary final subdivision and site plan approval for a two-lot subdivision in a new single-family residential home with associated site improvements on a 7.1 acre property located at 1881 Jackson Road. The property is now reformally owned by Penfield Presbyterian Church and Zoned R120, application number 19P-0014, SBL number 124.11-2-52.
Good evening. My name's Lucas. I'm here for Marathon Engineering, Lucas Bushen. I'm joined by Dan Stewart of Heritage Christian Services and Eric Schaaf, also from Marathon Engineering. I'll just quickly introduce the project, and I'll let Dan talk more in depth about Heritage Christian and the operation of this home. As was stated, we're here seeking preliminary final site plan approval. Plans were submitted to the town and the review agencies. We've received feedback from the town, the water authority, the health department. There's no major comments of concern, but there are some things I'd like to talk about, quickly touch on in my presentation. As was stated, the property is currently owned by Penfield Presbyterian Church on Jackson Road, just south of the split of Jackson Extension. It's just over a seven-acre parcel, and the applicant's proposing to subdivide it an acre and a half out for the construction of the new home. The property, the project will include the associated utility improvements, drainage improvements, some grading for a yard area to go with the home, and of course, the structure and a parking area for that structure. The church and the home will share the existing access via a shared access easement. There'll be no new entrances installed on Jackson Road. One of the site plan comments that has come up so far is feedback from the fire marshal and from the water authority that a private hydrant will be required, so we're going to be providing that. That's something that was not on the original plan set submitted, but even though this building will be sprinklered, it's over 600 feet from the nearest public hydrant, so a new private hydrant will go right in front of the proposed structure, right at the entrance of sort of that new driveway. That hydrant will be after the backflow device, conform with the water authority standards and all of that. Again, that addresses the fire marshal's comments. Also, the shed shown at that same location, the existing shed, it's used by the Boy Scouts of America in association with the church. That shed will be relocated to the other parking lot on the southern end of the site. That'll eliminate any setback issues created by the subdivision of the lot. It's currently right on where we're showing a proposed property line, so that's going to be moved. Some other elements of the site that have sort of developed as this feedback has come in, there'll be two air conditioning pad-mounted units set outside the building. Those will be set behind the building, right here. So, those are not shown on the original site plans, but those are elements that I want to make the board aware of, as well as there'll be provisions for a standby generator to be installed for the home. And there will also be some fencing shown on future plans that are submitted for review and approval along the back of the house, just to sort of create an enclosed area for the home. The last piece of feedback I'll touch on in this presentation before I hand it over to Dan is there were some town comments regarding grading of both the back of this lot and the associated town-owned drainage network and the residences to the west, which are lower than this property. And our effort to improve the drainage is providing inlets that catch all of the existing runoff from the church parking lot and the new improvements and tie them into the structures. So, rather than letting all the impervious area sheet flow across the land, we'll be capturing that, putting it in pipes, and tying it in so that it bypasses that area, that property line between the applicant and the neighbors. With that, I'll hand it over to Dan to talk more about the home itself.
My name's Dan Stewart, and Director of Facilities for Heritage Christian Services. Heritage was founded in 1984 as one group home in Webster. Four families came together. Since then, fast forward, we're over 120 different facilities, high side of 85 single-family residential homes used for care of people with developmental disabilities. This particular home, as Lucas said, six-bedroom, two-bathroom, two-and-a-half bathroom, approximately 3,450 square feet. He's shown 4,000, so it's right in that neighborhood with it. It will have an office area, a laundry room, a med room. As Lucas stated, public water, storm sewer, sanitary sewer. It will be built as a life safety code, board and care facility. So, as he stated, a sprinkler system, full fire system, detection in the home, what have you. Staffing for this type of home, typically, you might have two to three staff, potentially four people on, depending on the needs of the individuals in the home. We would probably see that in the morning. It would ramp up as people were getting up, as people left for the day to go to different programs. That staffing would reduce, and then in the evening, once again, ramp back up based on the needs of the individuals here. We don't have the six people identified who will be coming into this particular home at this time. This is through New York State, the Medicaid/Medicare program. We did submit a 40-day letter to the town of Penfield, which was satisfied as part of the site selection law. We did also hold three informational meetings over at the church between the church and the childcare parents. We had an informational meeting for the neighbors, and then the town was there about two weeks ago, and we hosted another informational meeting, which invited the neighbors that were within, I believe, half-mile of the property. So... And let me go back once again to operations. Like I said, people in this home may go out to day program, may go to work, what have you, during the day. So, Monday through Friday, you may have some vehicles coming in and out of the site. Our plan is to have, if there was any larger vehicles, that they would come out into here so that we wouldn't have the backup buzzards going off on them. What we're showing here also is potential of this driveway coming out. Reason we're not showing that right now is that they do run a childcare center out of here, and this is a very active part for the programming today, so we're just trying to keep the traffic off to one side with it. As Lucas said, we're accessing this common area down through here. We will be using this parking up here for additional overflow for the project. So, if there are any questions, we can...
Okay. Bob, you want to start off?
Yeah, Dan, you just talked about parking. There are spots, new parking spots by the proposed home. So, you anticipate that would satisfy all the needs for staff?
More than likely not.
Okay.
Based on the needs of the individuals, I can't... I can speak in general terms, Bob. We would have, more than likely, based on the needs of individuals, we may have four staff. You may have family involvement. You would more than likely have a vehicle, if not two vehicles, assigned to the house. But instead of creating more on our particular lot, we had talked to the church, and based on their attendance, felt as though this would be good use of that.
Okay, so there'd be some overflow on the existing church lot.
Correct.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
The generator, I assume that's natural gas fired?
Yes.
For the location, I guess just be aware, when that's being selected, what the noise level is of that unit, being that there's, I don't know, it's probably hundreds of feet away where the neighbors are, but...
Yes. Our thought was back in here, which, yes, would be a substantial, but we'll definitely get calculations on the noise decibels and what have you on that unit, if we decide that we're going to put one in. Right now, it's undecided whether it makes sense to put it into this particular site.
The trash receptacles, what do you anticipate for...
We will use totes, which we'll store in the garage. The church does have a dumpster here, but I, you know, we're better off just to handle it ourselves, so the garbage cans will come out here for garbage pickup and then be brought back in on garbage days.
So, it's more like a residential pickup versus...
Correct.
Yeah.
Same schedule as the rest of the neighborhood with totes.
Okay. And I think the deliveries, it looks like that's pretty straightforward.
Deliveries, Heritage, we kind of pride ourselves on having this as you would in your family.
Okay.
So, we typically don't have a large delivery of, here's all your product for the month type thing. It's important for us to be in the community, to be out shopping, for the individuals to take part in shopping for their own products, to go to Wegmans, to be involved in it. So, there may be a little bit of that, but I wouldn't expect a lot of that. I would expect staff and/or residents, with residents hopefully, to be going out and using the vehicle that's assigned to the house to handle that.
Okay, is there a vehicle, a bus, that stays on-site?
More than... And I don't know for sure, Bob, because like I said, I'm not sure of the people living here, what the needs will be.
Okay.
There is potential that we will have, more than likely, two vehicles, whether they're a wheelchair-accessible, small bus, down to a minivan, potentially a car. We have been using a lot more of the crossovers, I'll call it a transit-type vehicle, which a little less... A little more compact, fits the needs, once again, of how to get three to four people in wheelchairs out together, working through with staffing and stuff like that, ratios with that at the same time.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
Sure. Yes.
So, you show on the site plan that this is really for toddlers, younger children.
Excuse me?
Oh, okay.
All right.
What's the age group of...
Heritage, we serve people 18 years or older in our residential settings. We do not... We have not gone into a younger setting. Some of the other agencies in the area do handle younger kids, but Heritage, we are 18 years or older.
Any of the residents with behavioral problems?
I really don't know, Jim. Like I said, because we haven't... The way that New York State is working now, there's a needs list, and they... In years prior... State is working now, there's a needs list, and they, in years prior, Heritage was able to try, to try to group people together based on their interests, based on a number of different things, behaviorals and stuff like that. Here, we really don't have a good idea. My opinion is going to be there, these will be more medically frail challenges than they will be behavioral challenges.
Will you have a lockdown room?
No.
No lockdown room?
I'm not familiar with, when you say a lockdown room. No, Heritage does not have a lockdown room. I'm not sure what one is, but no, we don't have one.
I just wanted to explore whether or not there's a possibility that any of the residents could get outside the home and interact with children at the church.
They could. And once again, their plans of protective oversight are very detailed on how much time they might be outside, if they have a long time in the community. It's a very detailed process with the individuals that would be moving into any of our homes with, with that idea.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Okay.
Dan, you'd mentioned there, you have 120 properties?
We operate 120 properties total.
How many of them are homes, say, like this?
Seventy-five certified sites similar to this, ranging from a three-bedroom up to a 10-bed unit. We have a number of customized residential options, approximately 15 residential options that are less restrictive, less oversight from the state. It's a non-certified site that we've just started with in the last five to seven years, trying to be more cost-effective, give another opportunity for people that could be independent, maybe doesn't need the staffing 24 hours a day. Most of our certified sites, we have people on staff overnight, 24 hours a day. So, and then on top of that, we have a number of day programs, childcare centers, relationships with Monroe County, so Springdale Farms in Spencerport, we operate that, have been now for 25 years. So we got a large impact on the community.
How many, do you know how many of these you have in Penfield currently?
I don't know the exact number. If I had to guess, we're on the high side of 10, if not 12-plus homes very similar to this, and would be happy to share some of those addresses if people would like to drive by to see what it, that looks like.
My guess is people don't even know that...
Our hope is people don't know necessarily, and that's one thing Heritage does pride themselves on, is that the garage door will be a residential garage door. At the end of the day, to put the high-side garage door on it draws more attention. By the time you build the garage big enough in order to handle a wheelchair-accessible vehicle, it just gets too massive on it. So yes, most of our homes, the best we can is, has been a thing that Heritage has prided itself on for many years.
Okay. I'm going to ask a question on drainage, so probably Lucas would step back up. Can you go into a little bit about, you kind of went over the drainage plan, but did I take, was I correct in hearing that you're treating the entire site, helping the entire church site, as well as this site with the drainage plan?
The way we try to think about drainage is existing conditions versus proposed conditions. Where's all the water going? And in this case, it's all going down a creek here to, creek just, just down the street there. I can't remember the name of it, I apologize. But the total flow through that point will go down, and that's, that's the goal of our development, is just to reduce runoff, the, the amount of rainwater that exits the property. We're going to be focusing on collecting that around the proposed home. We're going to be installing the drainage improvements on the proposed, the proposed lot to be purchased. It just so happens that most of the runoff from the church site does happen through that corridor. This is all sloped straight back, and all this runoff right now just goes straight back.
So currently, sheet flows onto the proposed site?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, and so that's where we'll be grabbing it. Since we're under an acre and not required to, to do a full-on SWIP, we're not required by the DEC to look at those numbers, but I know that, you know, most towns still require you to, to think about that. So that's how we approached it, trying to capture all the runoff on our site and reduce runoff from our site as much as possible.
Okay. Thanks. In the AC units, you'd mentioned pad mount, are they going to be similar to what you would see at a house?
Yes, they, they will be very similar to a house, probably two 80,000 BTU furnaces with a, I don't know, three-ton compressor with them.
So basically the same thing that every neighborhood in Penfield has?
Yeah, just based on the square footage of the house, and also if a unit goes down, that's typically why we put two units in.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, just got a couple. Excuse me, Dan. So you have practically, what, 10 of these in the town of Penfield right now?
I would say, Terry, yes.
Okay, and how many are in town or similar to this as, on other properties, like the church?
Town of Penfield?
Yes.
Probably one, which would be Whalen Road.
Whalen Road?
Yep.
Okay, and that's on another church lotter?
Yes, Church of the Incarnation.
Okay. Regarding the parking issues and things like that, because you're going to be sharing parking and with the vans, it might end up being parked in there. Have you received any letter or from the pastor, anybody from the church stating that you guys have permission to use their parking?
Yes, yes, we do. We also have someone from the church here, I'm sorry, if there was any questions on that. Doug Fox also was working with us. He's liaison with the church. So yes, there will be crossover agreements. And also, Terry, if you look at this here, this technically, we will give them back a crossover agreement for them to utilize this whole row here, which technically becomes Heritage's property. The reason that we put this on here is more than likely those utilities will come right down through the center to preserve all these trees along the north property line.
Yeah, that's my other question. Will there be landscaping up along the back there, buffering the neighbors in the back?
There is a, the existing that we're not touching. We will complement a little bit with this, and we would like to catch up with the neighbors to see if we couldn't clean up some of this area in between. There are some debris piles there from years gone by that, you know, maybe we could complement it.
And the neighborhood meeting, you said it was a good showing?
I believe we had three people on the last one. Typically around three to five families, I believe, these neighbors, these neighbors, some from over here were in attendance in, like I said, because we did have three different meetings.
Okay. Oh, three different meetings, okay.
Yeah.
And most of them were favorable?
Yeah, there was normal concerns of, geez, we always thought that was going to be forever wild. What about the trees? And the best we could to describe what's going there. But I, I think at the end of the day, we tried to listen to what their challenge or thoughts were, especially, geez, hate to see those trees, but if you got it, you got it. They're very accommodating, but at the end of the day, fortunately, the church came back to us and said, hey, here's a way of alleviating that challenge anyways.
And so they're going to be addressed if they haven't been already addressed?
Well, I think for the most part, we have, right. The only other question, Terry, as Lucas said, we're going to catch all this drainage with a 12-inch pipe through here and come down to this DI that's here. The site is a little different because there's a DI that is approximately four foot higher than the backyards over here, which I, you know, is an existing condition that I'm not sure if the town or, you know, the neighborhoods can do something to improve that, to dry out those backyards. But we're going to be capturing, like Lucas said, all this water and plumbing it, or piping it into the public system.
What about additional lighting for, because it's 24/7 operation, obviously you'd need additional lighting, right?
Well, the parking lot does have lighting, and we will probably have one post out here, residential and neighbor, you know, on, one post and maybe one on the house to light up that particular parking area.
Yeah, very good for...
Residential and neighbors, you know, residential-type post.
What about variances? You're going to need any variances from zoning?
No variances.
Okay.
We were going to until we decided they were to move the shed, and now everything came into compliance with it.
Okay, yeah, the Boy Scouts shed.
Yeah.
So you're just going to move it to another spot there, right?
They've got a current shed that's over here, which has power on it, and by moving it to the side of that, it does, everything comes into compliance.
Great. Got to take care of the Boy Scouts.
Absolutely.
Okay, let's see, was there any other questions? Oh, I noticed in the letter here, what, you guys are going to go to the town board for a waiver for the recreation fee? Has that been resolved, or is that just a, am I reading that wrong?
I don't know, unless it was a comment on the, we need to go to the town for the recreation fee, but again...
Yes, it says, "We respectfully request the town board waive the recreation fee for this particular project."
I think that's in reference to the sidewalk fee?
No, it was...
No, the recreation fee.
Okay. I'm not sure on Terry was...
So you're not opposed to paying the recreation fee?
For a $500 fee?
No. Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, I'm good.
Good value on that, right?
Phil, do you have any questions?
I'm all set.
Anybody else on the board?
Good.
Good?
Not a board, but still a question.
You have a question?
Dan, could you, we, we spoke in the past, and I just wanted to capture for the board, the recreational areas you plan to use for the property, how, how you talked about kind of offering the front of the site to minimize activity in the back if it were a concern for the neighbors. You mind explaining that for the board?
Right. Well, this right here, what we're trying to do also is work with the childcare center. They lost their playground area, football field, when my kids were there. This was the football field, but then they put parking in. So this area here has some trees and what have you, so we're, we're hoping to, or the plan is to level that out so that they have some area. The thoughts would be is people would enjoy the front yard with the activity there. So, you know, we're going to maybe make this patio just a little bit bigger, just to encourage people to use the front yard. The backyard, we will still, as Lucas said, this will have a fence, which would be a four-foot chain-link fence, because there may be somebody that might enjoy their backyard and have some time alone in their backyard, as per their, you know, plan. So there, there would be a four-foot fence in this area here, but it wouldn't be that substantial. And also, as you look at the grading, from here to here drops down five feet, so everything drops down in this back area pretty quick. So there's not a lot of opportunity to create too large of an area there. You know, with this back porch, there will be a light mounted next to the door, along with this one here, which will just work with staff to hopefully have turned off every night.
So it'll walkout basement?
We're not going to put a walkout basement in it.
Okay.
The only reason that we're putting a full basement in at age is because we need to generate fill.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? All right, would, actually, we have Danielle Mettler. Come on up.
Hello, my name is Danielle Mettler, and I live right here, right on the house right here, directly behind the, the proposed structure.
What is that address, please?
It's 55 Wishingell Circle.
Thank you.
And full disclosure, while I'm here representing myself, I, I am an attorney with Barclay Damon, who, who actually does these types of issues. So, just, just for full disclosure. So I have several sort of comments and questions, and unfortunately, I could not make the meetings I have. So I did speak with Dan before they, they actually submitted the plans to you. So I hadn't seen the new, the new revised plans until I, I did call the town today and got them from the website. But just a few things, and I appreciate your questions and comments as well, and also the fact that since I last saw the plans, a lot more of these trees are staying. Although, although I would say, you know, I'm not sure what the, you know, how lo, how large these pieces actually are here that I'm seeing, the scale of this map. But, you know, as many trees as can be saved in the back here, obviously the better, because at this point, you know, like, I'm sure others have said, this has been green forever. And this, in this development, at least my development, has been there since the 60s. So I am concerned about several things, but one of which is the drainage and the proposed sewer right-of-way, the storm sewer right-of-way, which is in my backyard, basically. It's right here. I also have a tributary, which is shown on, on this map, but not here, that runs right here. It's a tributary, and that's 1,000-acre creek, actually, right there. So it's a tributary to that. So that runs here, my, that, so the tributary runs right along the back here. And it looks like the storm sewer, I'm not sure if it's existing or proposed, or there's a proposed expansion, but either way, it looks like it's directly, directly next to that tributary. So I'm not sure if there's going to be an impact. Will there be digging in my backyard or right next to it? Or what, what is the plan, and is it going to impact that tributary, actually? So I guess that's probably one of, one of my biggest concerns, that, and the tree cutting, like I said, the, the smallest amount, the better. And also, you mentioned the, the water line. I'm guessing that's coming from this way, not this way, you know, but I'm guessing the water line for the fire hydrants and everything else is coming off the street, so they won't be coming through the back here. But that's, again, an assumption. Hopefully, that's correct. And then the lighting, I'm glad somebody mentioned the lighting. I would not want, because as was mentioned, I'm much lower than this property here. So there's a hill right, basically, you could walk up a hill and walk through and get to the church. And while this looks like a significant distance, it's not really that far. But either way, I think a light here would be directly in my bedroom, just because of the height of the house versus the height of the, the proposed structure. So the lighting, if there could even be motion lights or something to, so at least at, at night, there isn't light shining in my bedroom inadvertently, or advertently. And then the obvious visual concerns, because right now, you know, one of, one of the reasons I purchased this house six years ago was because the yard is great, the backyard, and it looks over, you know, a bunch of trees. So I certainly have a concern that if, like I said, it looks nice and full here, but it's really not all that full, and, and in the winter, it's pretty sparse. So just concern over the visual impact, and again, anything that can be done to save as many of those trees as possible would be fantastic. A little concerned about the fact that we don't have an actual SWIP for the property, Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan. Hopefully, those, sort of the, the material requirements of one, though, will be, will be upheld during construction. So again, I don't get a lot of the erosion and runoff into my property, which again, is this entire piece here. And then I had heard, I had spoken with the church previously, and they had mentioned that the home was actually going to be for elderly folks, or what they thought was going to be for elderly folks, likely in wheelchairs or, or otherwise physically disabled to some extent. And I am a little bit concerned to hear it may have people with behavioral problems. Not, I'm not overly concerned about that. To be honest, I'd be fine if the house was going to be right next to mine, a group home was next to mine. It's more the construction that I'm concerned about. So that, but also the fence, I'm not sure how far, if the fence, it would actually, I think, be a good thing if the fence sort of went around the whole backyard, so that, that, that concern would be eliminated at least to some extent. Yeah, so I think, I, I think I hit on all, all of the big things. Again, the, the storm water, the drainage, and whether the improvements that you suggested would actually be digging up my yard and putting in a huge new sewer pipe, and also impacting that small tributary that does run right into my yard. It actually stops about here. It's a runoff from, or a tributary off of that creek that goes through, so. And that's all I have. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else in the audience like to comment on this application? Would anyone else in the audience like to comment on this application? Okay, can be a TV star, we're on cable TV, millions of people watching. Sure you don't want to, okay. Any other comments from the board?
Oh, you know, actually, just one more thing.
Come on.
Sorry, if, um, if it would be, be helpful, um, or if it all reviewed, I would be happy to put my comments into, uh, written materials, so.
Thank you. Okay, do you have any closing comments? Not necessary if you don't want to, but you're welcome to.
Do you want us just to speak real quick on location of sanitary sewer?
Sure. Sure.
Take some of this out? I'll clarify. Yeah, the water service is coming up the front, water, electric and gas, and, and then the sanitary sewer is at the back of the property. That was installed with Squire subdivision, um, and it, it travels westward from there. And then obviously the storm is tying into the existing.
I, I think what she's interested in is where you're gonna run the sanitary lateral and what kind of.
Normally they would come down here and in parallel with that line. We'll do as minimal disruption as we can. The church currently comes down here and then 45 is over into here, but we'll, because of the easements, have to be closer to the property line. This storm line, once again, should be just a straight run, uh, to there, once again, the best we can to disrupt. There shouldn't be any reason that we should be having any impact on any neighboring properties.
And you're gonna hard pipe storm conductors into that DI in the back of the property?
Correct. They're gonna tie into here under this 12-inch pipe.
And you're gonna see about maybe, maybe moving the inlet, lowering the inlet to maybe help improve?
We'll have to research that, Jim. Uh, once again, this pipe that comes down through here, there's a, a DI here and a DI here, and that is approximately four to five feet above their yards. Yeah, whether we work with the town, it's their system. We'll explore it and try to figure out what they can do. I believe the way the system is designed is that it comes out here and that this, these yards here are designed to drain in this fashion below that elevation. It's not designed to be piped. So maybe an area of improvement that we could work with the town and the, the neighbors to improve on, uh, but at the end of the day, it's a pre-existing condition with it.
Would you intend to put a bench wall in the manhole and hard pipe it?
Yes, we'll be cor, coring into the existing inlet. And, and I'll just note that I, we, we feel that the most effective way to capture storm water is with new structures, not with the placement of that existing structure, so that's, that's our goal, is to provide two new that grab the water and bring it in to the pipe system. And I'll also mention that, of course, uh, we'll be providing erosion control measures and, um, abiding by all the, the town standards in that regard.
Regards to lighting, we have an opportunity here, especially with this light here, if we put it on the right side of here, we could shield it to, you know, because what I need to do is light up this walkway in this, that, that travel path around.
Is that 24/7? You need to light that up there?
No, this is a board and care facility. If it was a healthcare facility, I would need to, but in this particular case, I don't need to. I just need to work with staff to be, to turn it off. Motion sensors, um, I, you know, we, we, we will have dust to dawn on them, but, um, typically we will have a switch override on it.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, one more thing, I just forgot. Just the time that it will take to construct, I, I didn't, I, I can go up there.
We would anticipate five months to where it's built out on it.
Okay.
In that, I'm sorry, I will come on. So, but five months, um, of, of daily, uh, construction would be, well, my husband works nights, so it would be definitely five months of blown sleep for him, um, but if it's, if it's five months, um, consistent, uh, construction, that's a bit concerning, but doesn't.
Thank you. Sir, come on up.
A little shorter. My name's John Bacon and I've been a member of Penfield Presbyterian Church for, uh, 41 years and one of my, uh, primary, uh, assignments has been, uh, on the property committee and, and, uh, and the session of the church. Let me give you the background a little bit on what this is all about. Uh, like many churches where our membership has dropped off. At one point, we were at, uh, about, uh, 900 members in the seventies and eighties, and we're at about 150 members now. So, uh, we're under financial pressures, uh, and the question became, what, we're sitting on a big piece of property, what could we do with it? And what would be the Christian thing to do with it? And the thought came up, well, perhaps we could be into a, another mission program here and we may be, uh, even relating with these, these folks occasionally, uh, whether it be Sunday services or what have you. But more importantly, it, it takes some idle land that has just been sitting there for years, uh, and, uh, cleaning it up. We certainly have done everything we can to, uh, be sure that the neighbors are going to be minimally impacted and if there's any impact, we want it positive, not negative. And, uh, well, we'll, uh, do our best to go and, uh, see that that, that's the way it's gonna be carried out. We have seen, for example, the, uh, some, evidence of some of their homes in the area, uh, it was cited, the one at the corner of Wayland and, um, uh, yeah, Wayland Five Mile, uh, line. And quite frankly, I'd be proud to have the place sitting next to me. Uh, they could take excellent care of their properties, uh, and keep them neat and clean and, uh, make excellent neighbors. So, uh, for the neighbors, uh, we've, we've been open to them and will continue to be open to them. If there are any concerns, please, uh, don't be shy, let us know your concerns. But it will be a construction project for a brief period of time and there'll be a little bit of noise, there'll be a little, a little bit of dust, but, um, uh, quite frankly, uh, we'll do our best to, to, uh, make this project something that we'll all be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, with, uh, no further comments, thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you, everyone, for your participation and we'll call this here and close. Okay.
Let's just go with the grading and utility plan.
Let's, uh, discuss this. We have a draft resolution that was prepared.
You have an EAF for tonight and, and always, and like you said, there'll always be time for it.
Right. Yes. So why don't we get started?
Sure. So with regards to some of the topics that were discussed at the public hearing, I just wanted to clarify those for the board, um, and I'm gonna ask Mike to help, help me with this, to kinda go over, um, the drainage situation. I think there were a couple, just mainly for the record to understand what was happening there, um, and now we have the plan up here on the screen as that was, uh, we didn't have it up there during the presentation. As they said, and to kinda to AJ, to your question, how much of the site is being treated for runoff? Well, they're adding the two inlets, as you can see, the, the square dots on the map there, um, they're sending, they're adding those in to pick up the existing sheet flow on the site along with the regrading that's gonna be taking place. And sending that water to the existing storm sewer system that's at the rear of the property in a town easement. If anything needs to be changed with that structure, as the applicant said, we'll discuss that with them about what solutions can be, that can, uh, be had back there.
That's a pipe?
Yes.
At the rear of the property?
Yes.
No, just a swell?
No, there's a pipe.
Okay.
With catch basins.
That's all piped there, correct. And then it falls off from there, um, and there is a swell.
Yeah, but it collect it and then it goes into the.
Right.
Catch basins along that.
Exactly, so by collecting it there, less runoff will reach that property line and ultimately less runoff will reach those rear yards as they express in their concerns.
Right.
Um. The other things I wanted to touch on. That's probably the biggest one, honestly, with this project is those improvements. Um, I, I was at that last neighbor meeting they, they, uh, they referenced during the, during the presentation. They wanna work with the church to make the best improvements for the site, uh, with regards to debris or leveling out land that needs to be cleaned up on the property and, um, supplementing the plantings, uh, if necessary to the prop, along the property line to the north, but it'll be removing trees to do that grading work you're seeing on the plan there. You can see the small patio area, um, with the sidewalks leading to it, that's the extent of the fencing that would be provided. As they said, most of that recreation area will be focused towards the front of the property where it can interact with the rest of, um, the church or just kinda have a shared space, rather. They do have shared, they'll have shared parking and cross access in place. Uh, they'll be maintaining the parking spaces along the north property line, they'll be maintaining the tree line, which were topics of concern amongst the neighbors initially. And while they have the equipment there, they're agreeing with the church to get the shed relocated, uh, on the property and avoid any variances for that. So that will be updated, as you see on that plan. We did send out PRC comments for this project. We have not received the revised plant, the revised plans yet, however, in reviewing the comments, you'll see that they're all technical in nature at this point. At this point, um, they kinda touched on everything during the presentation of what would be included on the plans. Mike, did you have any concerns or things to add to how they're just addressing all the utilities?
No, I mean, I think with adding the storm sewer, they're definitely, basically taking all that runoff from the parking lot that would sheet flow over all that and probably since that catch basin in the back is higher, would then just go down the hill into their property. Now they're collecting it all and putting it into the pipe and then they're putting it into the, our existing storm sewer, which will go to the north and then go to the Thousand Acre Swamp, so basically all that overland sheet flow is pretty much gone.
Right.
So the backyard should dry out a little bit?
Right.
Is it like Danielle Mettler?
Yes.
Is that one to the north of that?
Yeah, I mean, you're still gonna get whatever runoff from the west side of the house probably go that way, but it's significantly reduced compared to what would, is currently going there.
Does the roof go into the storm?
Yeah, they're gonna tie it in, they're gonna tie it into the. And they, she had a question or concern about the SWIP. I, my belief, and we're probably gonna get some, need to get some clarification on it, is that this site's under an acre, all they're required to do is erosion control, there's no formal D C SWIP.
Yeah, there's no SWIP requirement on this, is it?
No.
So, Zach, the, um, the way it was shown on the drawing, it looks like the area that the boundary where the house is gonna go in there a lot, they're gonna have to clear cut that for the rating?
Yep.
So no trees will be left on that, they're gonna.
No, exactly, they're showing the limit, the, the limits of the tree removal by the. The, um, the dark line around the grading. Um, yeah, that would be all cleared out for that work, 'cause like they said, they wanna clear that out, create kind of a play area in there, uh, do the typical foundation plantings around, uh, around the house as we would see, um, normally with these applications. And then the, and then the necessary screening around those.
Okay.
Air conditioning units, um.
But there's no change from like your tree preservation plan then, from what they, the work they need to do the grading?
Correct, correct. There's, there's a lot of grade change out there, as you can see from the lighter.
Yeah, the.
Shading.
Compacted it as much as they could.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it, just in terms of drainage, that's a better meant to, to clean that up that way.
'Cause it looks like a pretty heavily wooded lot if you drive by it.
Mm-hmm.
Look in the back of the parking lot, it's, it's pretty thick, so, okay.
And I think, I mean, this is, you know, uh, they do have the right to do that, you know, to remove the trees as necessary, um, to create that space and working with the church, um, you know, typically we just see a couple's trees planted as part of our, like, street tree planting policy, it's a residential lot. So, uh, while this is a flag lot, you know, that can be supplemented on the plans by including two trees, uh, at the front of the property in, in appropriate locations, um, as part of their overall landscape plan.
So are they gonna own part of the parking lot then?
Yes.
Yes.
Though you see the dark dash line?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the, that's the flag that they would own.
So they have an agreement with the church and, okay.
Yep.
It's kind of a strength. I don't know if we've had anyone like this before, before a proposal like this.
That's what I was asking.
These are flag lots, sure, but not like this.
But, uh. The flag pole part is over a parking lot that's maintained by another entity.
Okay.
The alternative to it was, um, and they can, they can work through this, uh, with the church as it goes along if necessary, but it wasn't desired at the time was, while they're doing the utilities, if the church didn't wanna put back that parking, um, it could go back to grass, but right now they're proposing to trench it, replace, uh, repair the pavement and keep it as is, so they do have that parking if necessary. And then we have the cross access easements over that, uh, and the shared parking agreements over that area, they'll all be mapped accordingly.
They could, they could land bake that parking.
Well, that's.
Yeah, and if they're.
That's what I would do.
If their, uh, uh, parishioner list has gone down that much, probably will need it.
I believe we brought that up.
Yeah, it is something that they're considering right now, uh, as part of the. Obviously, anytime you can reduce the paving, you can.
If they go with a generator, is there a, a spec for noise level at the boundary, at the, uh, property line?
Not a decibel in our code. Uh, it's all based on the emitted sound past the property line at, um, basically the evening hours.
Okay.
After that, it becomes like, if there's, uh, a noise that's generated from a site that is uncommon and persisting for hours upon hours, say like, I don't know, um, s, s, someone left a faulty car running for three hours and it just makes a terrible noise, or someone has an air horn that they just sound off or something.
Kind of fire once a week for 30 minutes?
Yeah.
And it's probably always during the day?
Yep.
10 or 12, 14 kilowatt.
Right, it's gonna be your residential, it's a generator.
Your mother has one, trick side, inside the house, you don't hear it, you don't know it.
Okay, but no, there isn't a hard number in the noise ordinance, uh, of the code. It's all based on kinda what's observed in those conditions.
Okay.
So based on these comments, would the board like to see revisions or are we comfortable moving into a pre-milar process with this project, um, and kinda, and staff can oversee these technical items that are remaining? I'll leave it up to the five of you.
I'm, I'm comfortable.
I'm comfortable.
Yeah, maybe. I would, uh, move that we move forward with what we've discussed and prepare a, um, resolution.
Okay. Do you wanna vote to approve the project then tonight? Or?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have an EAF that you guys can vote on tonight, that'll be the first action.
Okay, I'll move to approve the EAF.
I'll second.
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Kenauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
And, um, I'll also move that finish preparation of the resolution as we discussed.
Perfect.
Engineering updates as we do.
Sounds good. Second?
Was that to approve the resolution there?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second.
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Kenauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
Okay.
Excellent.
That just starts the project.
We'll be in touch. That concludes all of our business for the evening. Next meeting's on the 27th.
Considering no other business, we'll see you on the 27th and we will be sure. Thanks, everyone, for coming.